ओके प्रारंभिज्ञस्कुना साल मैयां बढ़िकुमुंदे तरवादले सीएमपुंड्रियरण्डी यानी आह शेपकलायकतने प्रणिन्चि वर्षकाल कुच्छाले अनि तरवाद मैं तरवाद जिलोटु वर्षकाल कुच्छुने अनि मानदेश जुबिच्छ प्रारंभिज्ञस्कुना रामयात्रण्डी अशुद्रायिन माँ देवा ममलन्मिक्रिया प्रेमिण्चिन माँ परमधन्डी बीकुमार्डु माँ प्रमाणेशु कृष्टवारी जर्मनेटु निनामान पटिनी बोधनात्मजिस्तुना रचेगितिया इन दिनांबैच्छ मी बोधनात्मजिस्तुना अया बन्नो बन्नो लाया मेरे रसोंछन जोलाय आयोनो धारिकन गुरुसमर्थिन स्कूलो इदाउक पर्सिंग अन्वर आर्विच्छनेट्मण्डी युवा चरिया देवात्रण्डी अथा मुख्यार संक्षराल मेर्या अन्त्यान देवात्रण्डी माँ तोडियावुडी इनाडु मारी ई मंत्रमलो देवात्रण्डी मे मुनारादेच्छी कान्वच्चलु जुझने पर्पोपर्के मी बोधनात्मजिस्तुना देवास्तोत नैनस्तोतुल जरिक भापर्वा देवात्रण्डी मारी मी देवा संक्षराल माँ दयाक्रेटिंग गाने क्रेष्टनदु बोधनात्मजिस्तुना देवास्तोत नैनस्तोतुल नैना बोधनातु कथरण्डी दिनाल मारी टीदाउस्टडु मारी पाल झाकोगानी उरानिच्छी महाजयतीस्पच्छी तेरा पत्रित गान वाडुपनाल तैनमटिनी पत्रा महावत्त्वाट्लो जरिक जिनापर्चेरिया निर्गेट अरुपच्छी रयात्रण्डी ममल बाला पाच्छन विष्टेर पाच्छन देवात्रण्डी मे सहवासमलो देवात्रण्डी मारी हमसागदु दिनाम कर्के परमेश्वरी सिलेबलो प्रवेश कुच्छे देखियो सामय पर ममल आयप्प बन्स्मन प्रार्थिस्तुना प्रवाह देवा बोधनातु मारे सारे माँ मलेहिंदर अनेकु गुणस्थान मेह देवात्रण्डी रक्षण को पेंडन बोधनातु देवात्रण्डी अनेकु गुणस्थान प्रमाण श्रेण्डी इनका मारो अनिनेट्मण्डी प्रतिपालित्तु देवातालिंची सागम जमापरित चज्जु विमलमहित पर्चरिका केमन प्रार्थिस्तुना अया बन्नो स्तोत नैनस्तोतुल युद्धकारण जरिकेट्मण्डी उड़िकर्के प्रार्थिस्तुना कुजने निपटन पटिनी बोधनातु इनका वस्तनवार पर्के इनका इक्रोम्निस्तु बोधनातु प्रार्थिस्तुना अनेकु बेल सन्यदीती सुरेटिंग अया मे कुच्छु जिस्मने प्रार्थिस्तुना महाजय गोस्त्राकडिनी रचेगितिया यामुद्दस्तु नैन श्यामगा महाजनर्थिन्डी चल्डी मी आप आविष्येत देच्छी महाजय गोवाल्यवाटु मने प्रार्थिस्तुना प्रवाह कुच्छु जिस्मने ये आर्डम अत्यापड़ा मे अत्यापड़ प्रॉक्शन के नी मे जिस्मन स्तुना यार जिसे ये बड़ा फैले रखा पे शाय देवात्रण्डी फाइट यावा इन्चे वार पर्कु पाठल्य पाठ्यवार पर्कु प्रार्थिस्तुना प्रमाण ये युक्त समयानी आश्वयन देखियो प्रार्थिस्तुना अया मे कुच्छु रक्षण दयाबन्दानी ये बोधनात्मजिस्तुना अनेका देवारी उन्नेका रामबै निनालो मेरे देवाच्या गरियातो मारी सागम देवापरित चज्जु अनेक आत्मार रक्षण कर्के प्रार्थिस्तुनु दुत्सागिदारी साहित्यमने प्रार्थिस्तुना प्रवाह मे कुच्छु जिस्मने माँ केहात्र मे कुच्छी युक्रों गर्कु प्रार्थिस्तुना अकुनलन्डी लाइक गर्कु प्रार्थिस्तुना देवा बोधनातु मेरे साहित्य देवा प्रेमासहवादन नाइकतन अनिग्रिम्सी देवात्रण्डी ई जुगाम सारेका देवापर्चेरिपर्क साहित्यज्ञारी गर्दु जुरिंस्मनी मे ये बोधनात्मजिस्तु ये अन्दा एलोलाय एम्बालेल तेरु वस्त्रितु निष्ठितु निष्ठितु सागितु वाधनात्मजिस्तु अनेकु ये बेलु गर्वालातु सामय जुरिंग सामय वस्तवा वास्तवाद अन्त्यान यस्ता बोलस्कु जिची प्रार्थिची बेलु गुणस्थान तण्डी अबेरे अबे अया गोल्ड
सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान निच्यामो निन्ने आराधिंची निच्यामो निन्ने आराधिंची महिमापरत मुहिलो महिमापरत मुहिलो सुतिकी पासुरान सुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान पापमुल मानुनीकु पहुदुगंगु देयका आप पापमुल मानुनीकु पहुदुगंगु देयका नी पाप मेरुगनी प्रकुआ मोकई सिंहु बोधो बलिरयुतिवा मीरात्मुत मुकई मी चन्तक चेत्तीवा मीरात्मुत मुकई मी चन्तक चेत्तीवा सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान लोकासकुलों की पोइ नी सहवासमुविरसा आ लोकासकुलों की पोइ नी सहवासमुविरसा आपसकुलों विरिवाहिन नी सोकावर समसरितिवा परिचुक गहान्नु सिंधी परमास्वास्त्यहुनी उतितिवा परिचुक गहान्नु सिंधी परमास्वास्त्यहुनी उतितिवा सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सागमुता सुलाविन निंज्या पार्कमुलु विरसा आ सागमुता सुलाविन निंज्या पार्कमुलु विरसा पत्नावैना मागलु निंज्या चिह्मु गातिवा निंज्यामु निन्ने सेवियम सज्यवाक्यमु सगितिवा निंज्यामु निन्ने सेवियम सज्यवाक्यमु सगितिवा सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान नीरीचनाले कमियु नी पाकुलावैयुंदा आ नीरीचनाले कमियु नी पाकुलावैयुंदा करका रानैयुंदा प्रभाव अलमा नीरीचना नी उतितिवा नीरापकैयु जुड़ा सिंध पार्कमुलु सगितिवा नीरापकैयु जुड़ा सिंध पार्कमुलु सगितिवा सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान निंज्यामु निन्ने आराधिंची निंज्यामु निन्ने आराधिंची महिमापरत मुहिलो महिमापरत मुहिलो सुतिकी पासुरान सुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान सुतिंदु मुहे सुप्रकलान मासुतिकी पासुरान नीमान्दिरालो अनिसुलाल नी प्रजय करिति महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा नीरात्मु सिंधी सुतना जय पामु सिंधी नीरात्मु सिंधी सुतना जय पामु सिंधी वार्जरु रामु सिंधी नीमातेजा राजीली वार्जरु रामु सिंधी नीमातेजा राजीली उद्वालय अन्तु कबांचु बिंबी उद्दिकामु सिंधी उद्वालय अन्तु कबांचु बिंबी उद्दिकामु सिंधी महिमा 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 नीमे महिमा 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 नीमे नीमान्दिरालो अनिसुलाल नी प्रजय करिति महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा नीमातेजा उल्लय निंज्याम पतिन्ती मातिले गाउ नीमातेजा उल्लय निंज्याम पतिन्ती मातिले गाउ अनुतिना उद्दिकी सुतना भल्यामु बन्दी अनुतिना उद्दिकी सुतना भल्यामु बन्दी अनिकिलन्दु जीवितारी बाजु बाजु देगाउ अनिकिलन्दु जीवितारी बाजु बाजु देगाउ महिमा 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 नीमे महिमा 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 नीमे नीमान्दिरालो अनिसुलाल नी प्रजय करिति महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा नीमातेजा उल्लय दर्व निंज्यात्तांजामु दिरतम नीमातेजा उल्लय दर्व निंज्यात्तांजामु दिरतम सुतना भल्यामु अन्तु कद्दाद्दा सिलामु दिलचु सुतना भल्यामु अन्तु कद्दाद्दा सिलामु दिलचु अनुत्तामु नी मासुत्तामु नी आदर्यामु बुद्ध अनुत्तामु नी मासुत्तामु नी आदर्यामु बुद्ध महिमा 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 नीमे महिमा 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 नीमे नीमान्दिरालो अनिसुलाल नी प्रजय करिति महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा उद्वालय नी महिमा आतिकामु उल्लय वलराम उद्वालय नी महिमा आतिकामु उल्लय वलराम जनी नी बुद्धि आन्द्रपाप महिमा जनी नी बुद्धि आन्द्रपाप महिमा उद्वालय महिमा नी दिला महिमा नी दिला नी बुद्धि उद्वालय महिमा नी दिला महिमा नी दिला नी बुद्धि महिमा 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 नीमे महिमा 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 नीमे नीमान्दिरालो अनिसुलाल नी प्रजय करिति महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा आन्द्रपाप मुलु चक्कीवारा वाले चुंदी आन्द्रपाप मुलु चक्कीवारा वाले चुंदी आन्द्रपाप महिमा नी बुद्धि वाली कामिमा आन्द्रपाप महिमा नी बुद्धि वाली कामिमा युक्त युक्त उल्लय कन्नता महिमा नीमे युक्त युक्त उल्लय युक्त युक्त उल्लय कन्नता महिमा नीमे युक्त युक्त उल्लय महिमा 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 नीमे महिमा 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 नीमे नीमान्दिरालो अनिसुलाल नी प्रजय करिति महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा महिमातेजसु निर्गति सुतना परचु देवा देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे तोड़िवाकसु लनुप मनलनु कबु केसेनुका तोड़िवाकसु लनुप मनलनु कबु केसेनुका देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे दुष्कलोकामु चुंदी आपु तामु दराचिंचे दुष्कलोकामु चुंदी आपु तामु दराचिंचे आमु यावर ताना मुलिची दईवास्वापवमो साबेनुका आमु यावर ताना मुलिची दईवास्वापवमो साबेनुका देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे दईवाबेदु गुरुबंधी दईवापनु पालु बंधी दईवाबेदु गुरुबंधी दईवापनु पालु बंधी निंज्या पाण्य मुनु बंधी निविन्निरुचि चुचितिवी निंज्या पाण्य मुनु बंधी निविन्निरुचि चुचितिवी देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे कपु पाली छुट्टकलो पालीवारा मधुलादु कपु पाली छुट्टकलो पालीवारा मधुलादु सकलसे बलपाले दईवासी चनुंदिति सकलसे बलपाले दईवासी चनुंदिति देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे परलोक पिनु बनु पालीवारी कालु केसे परलोक पिनु बनु पालीवारी कालु केसे नलाइंदी पाली निका जयमनल नेम्परचे नलाइंदी पाली निका जयमनल नेम्परचे देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे देवु नितो साहपाटी पालीवारी कालु केसे तन्नी इस्तुदिंचे लो योग्य लोगा मुकेसे तन्नी इस्तुदिंचे लो योग्य लोगा मुकेसे हली शुर्तुलस्वास्त्यमुल्य पालीवारी कालु केसे हली शुर्तुलस्वास्त्यमुल्य पालीवारी कालु केसे हरिश्वरुलस्वास्त्रमुल्य पालीवारी कालुजे से देव नित्य सहपाठी पालीवारी कालुजे से कृष्णुलो पालीवारिक विष्ट सुकुरमुलादुपुन्नि कृष्णुलो पालीवारिक विष्ट सुकुरमुलादुपुन्नि देव नित्य सहपाठी पालीवारी कालुजे से कबुपुपालिमयनु पालीवारमाउ मनमु कबुसेल्ला भेदचेनुका नियुलनुमेल पल्पेदमु देव नित्य सहपाठी पालीवारी कालुजे से देव नित्य सहपाठी पालीवारी कालुजे से तोड़ीवारसुलनुका मननुका पुजे सेनुका देव नित्य सहपाठी पालीवारी कालुजे से देव नित्य सहपाठी पालीवारी कालुजे से
नाइस तू बी हियर, यू आर योर मिक्स वंस अगेन आफ अगेन इस अर्थियो ऑफ टाइम वर्स आईटी फॉर्मल डी लास्ट टीम, लास्ट एस्टरे जॉइट बी हियर, यू आर मिक्स तू शेयर अलिटल बेड फ्रॉम पांच स्वार एंड इट चर्न विद मी टू डी वर्स डेट इस पेंशन यर, साम्स वर्स 13, 14 एंड 15 फॉर्टी अगर तुम कैसे 13, 14 एंड 15 सो आई एम श्योर डी लॉर्ड आईस ओवरलीड दिस प्रॉमिस फ्रॉम इस फास्ट 36 इयर्स चर्न विद मी टू साम्प 40 अलसो वी आर तू थैंक डी लॉर्ड ऑफ ऑल डी वंगरस थिंग्स डी लॉर्ड इस डॉन साम्प 40 एंड वर्स 5 ऑल टुकेदर एंड मोर सो आई वी लाइक डी लॉर्ड इस लेटर एवं शेयर ऑफ डी चर्च प्रॉमिस दिस मॉर्निंग व्हाट्स डी चर्च प्रॉमिस इट्स ट्रॉन्मी 31 वर्स 8 अगर आप कैसे वायर बड़े कुमो इस्तमाल मनीष शिवदानी कंधे लाते निकोचे सो डी लॉर्ड ब्लेस डी स्पोर्ट्स इन डी बैनर हार्ट्स दिस मॉर्निंग तू मेरी जेट ऑन इस वर्ड स्लाइविंग हैवीनी फॉर लडी, थैंक यू फॉर दिस मॉर्निंग ऑफ डी वास्टर बेडी गेट लाइक वर्ड आई एम हीरिंग सो अन्य मैसेजेस फ्रॉम दिस थैंक यू फॉर डी ब्लेसिंग ऑफ दिस डे वेयर यू कॉन्ट डी लाइक हाउस वर्षित एवं प्रेजिंग फॉर योर फेथ फॉर डी फास्ट 36 इयर्स ऑफ़ मिनिस्ट्री थैंक फॉर ऑल डी गुड ट्राम राम वॉर्स डी नीम स्प्रिक तू मी एंड स्प्रिक तू हस डी लाइक वर्ड यह प्रदास निश्चित चार्न मालुपर इन परिषद में निवित्त माविषय को देखें प्रवाह मी अक्षानिर्दोष मी अक्षमहिमतो एक प्रांत ने इफ़्वर्टी मार्क बी हियर तू बे अब्यू तू डी लॉर्ड रिसीव डी लाइव वर्ड डी ऑल ट्रेडियल्स ऑफ़ फाइन ये तो नीटुना प्रवाह अनुरुद्धम विष्टमुतो प्रवाह दान अंगी करेंस्टन तो लेस आई एम ऑफ़ डी आईएस डी वो वंगरस थिंग्स ऑफ़ डी लॉर्ड प्रवाह इधर मशास्त्र में अद्भुत में नारे उच्च छुड़कर अनेत्रमु तेरवनी माय यूज़ तू गियर डी आईस डी स्मॉल वॉइस इन फ्रंट में गो वी सैनिस्फाई डी गुडनेस अबॉर्डनेंस डी फैक्टर्स डी लाइन हाउस इन मंदिरांग लोन आयुक्त मंचतन मुक्ति आयुक्त रायश्वर एवं तो प्रवाह प्रत्येक गुरु देश चंद विलगरत्ती हमली हैवर्साउथ वी प्रेयर थैंक्सगिविंग इन डी लेसेट नेम ऑफ़ डी लॉर्ड एंड सेवियर जीसस क्राइस्ट मामले में ताकिंस्टन तू एस कृष्ण प्रवाह एक अपवितरण नारों होलो प्रार्थना नाम तंगी थ्री थिंग्स वी लर्न दिस मॉर्निंग फ्रॉम डी वर्स यू आर ट्रॉन्मी 31 वर्स 8 वॉल्वर्स डिवाइन डी डी सेकंड इस डिवाइन प्रेजेंस थर्ड इस डिवाइन प्रोटेक्शन थॉट्स व्हाट डी दिस चर्च आईस बी एन जॉइंग फास्ट 36 इयर्स आई एम बीन हियर फॉर राइट फॉर माय चाइन डिगार्डिंग टाउन फ्लोर कम विद माय डैड विस तू प्ले आर्मनी थ्री स्मॉल बट नाउ वेट तू लुक बैट एंड सी होव डी लॉर्ड आईस मल्टीप्लाई एंड ब्लेस दिस असेंबली सो लीडर्स लेड डी डी बेबील यस बीन विद दिस बेबील एंड यस प्रोटेक्टेड दिस डिस्ट्रिब्यूट एंड नाउ वी विल सी एंड वी लाइक होव डी लॉर्ड आईस डन एंड व्हाट डी लॉर्ड कैन डू इन डी कमी डेज आवर डी लॉर्ड इस डी वंगरस डी लॉर्ड इस ऑल बेस्ड विद अस यस बिफोर अस अप्राइड विद डी ट्रॉन्मी 31 एक्स सो यस बिफोर अस यस अलसो बिहाइंड अस अरे यस या याबे रेंडू पन्ने वाचन लॉर्ड डी लॉर्ड इस बिहाइंड यू सो यस बिहाइंड इस अलसो थर्ड इस वो 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 यस अबावर अलसो माना पायन भी उन्नर या वेडिस डिटर्जन अरे करवा रहा है साम 32 वर्स 8 व्हाट डी से नी को प्रदेश में चेस्ट अनु नी नारो वाचन मार्गों में निको देंचे यही मीदा दृष्टि एंड ची यही मीदा दृष्टि एंड ची नी को आलोचना चेत्तर यस अबावर अरे माना पायन भी उन्नर अत्मात्मा में काली बिलोअर अरे माना कृत्य भी उन्नर वेडिस डिटर्जन अरे माने भी डिट्यूट दित्य प्रदेश 33 वर्स 27 सो यस नॉट अलसो योर रवालास्ती डी लॉर्ड अरे माना शास्त्र में ना देवड़ू मान्त्रमें कालो रवालास्ती डी लॉर्ड इस अप्रिफ्यूज अरे माना 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 परसें नी दित्य मायना देवड़ू वस 27 विल बी इन लेट अरे वो 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 या नी गो अरे नी पुनिवास स्थलमु या यस माय रेफ्यूज अरे नाकु निवास स्थल में इन्नर बट होलो लॉन्ग गेट योर रेफ्यूज अरे एन्तकालु माय निवास स्थल में एलांग देव रहना एलांग देव रहना शास्त्र देना इटरल डी लॉर्ड अरे शास्त्र देना देवड़ू सो यस होलो लॉन्ग गेट योर रेफ्यूज अरे माना निवास स्थल मुका एन्तकालु तड़ 7 इयर्स 8 इयर्स छुट्टा शास्त्र तड़ सो थॉट्स व्हाय बिलो अस अंदर के ने रेंडो लाइन एम उन्नत नित्य मुकानु बाहु यू नी कृत्य नुडु सो यस बिलो अलसो अरे माना कृत्य भी उन्नर यस प्रोटेक्ट अस डॉर्ड इटरनेट पर नित्य अत्यंत भी बदरपरस्त नॉट अलसो डेट अरुमात्ता में कालो ऑलवेज अराउंड अस अरे माना चुच्चू भी उन्नर 35 वर्स 12 अरे मतलब रेंडू वाचन यहोवा नामी कैंचु वालो कदारक नित्य मुन्नु सियोनु कंदावरे मंदिर एक्सुलम चुच्चू परवत गुण यहोवा इधिमतल को नित्य मुताला प्रचला चुच्चू उन्नत नित्य अभी नित्य अरे कालो नित्य मुन्नत इस दें ऑल डू आवर लाइफ्स और इटरनेटी अराउंड अस अरे माना जीवित मान्त्र भी चुच्चू नित्य अत्यंत भी उन्नर डॉर्ड वी हैव माना अकुतम देवड़ी माना कनिगिन लव यस शोस्ट फॉर अस अकुतम देवड़ी प्रेम अनु प्रक्षम चुप्पीस वी सी होव डी लॉर्ड लीव्स अस अरे देवड़ू में निवित्त नाडिपिस्ता रुमान छुट्टा से आई विल गो बिफोर यू अरे नाचना जगा नी मुंदरा नाडिचु वाडो होव डी गो बिफोर अस अरे मुंदर बार तो एक्टा अलग रहना वी नोस्टर एवं सिर्फ अरे इशारा ने अकादमा दिन वो दे केम ऑन फ्रॉम डी लैंड एजिट अरे आई कुत्ते देश में इस पाइप उच्च नॉट सेड आई विल गो बिफोर यू देवड़ा नाडो नी मुंदर कार्य स्थान होव डी गो अरे ये तो विलय करेक्ट मेगस्तमम मेगस्तमम अग्निस्तमम वस गोइंग बिफोर डी फिलर ऑफ़ क्लाउड एंड फिलर ऑफ़ फायर अरे अग्निस्तममुका मेगस्तममुका वालु नाडिचु विलय बट डी प्रोडक्टर इस लेट हियर अरे देवड़ा में तो स्पष्ट उन्नत यस इन डी क्लाउड यस इन डी फिलर ऑफ़ फायर अरे अरे मेगमुलो उन्नर अग्निस्तममुलो दांतलो बड़ा मेगमुलो भी उन्नर एक्सेडेस 13 निर्गमा कान्नमु पदमड़ वादियां निर्गमा कान्नमु पदमड़ वादियां वर्स 21 24 वादियां नो इक्का स्पष्ट अवरावड़न वर्षकोतन में प्रयान में कोई अरे निम्न देखरने एकामो दिग्री वालो पगल रात्रि यू प्रयान में चेन्नत यहोवा त्रोहलो वाले नाडिंचु टाइ पगली के ले मेगस्तममुलो वाले वेलकिच्चे रात्रि वेल अग्निस्तममुलो नी वाले मुंदगा नाडिचु विच नॉट अलसो डेट फिलर ऑफ़ क्लाउड फिलर ऑफ़ फायर अरे देवड़ू मेगस्तममुलो अग्निस्तममुलो वालो उन्नर देस मोर क्लियर वर्स इन चैप्टर 14 15 वादियां नो इक्का स्पष्ट अवरावड़न वर्स 24 24 14 वादियां नो इक्का स्पष्ट अवरावड़न आई तो वेखो वाचन यहोवा अग्नि मेगमायनस्तममुन्नत आई कुत्तील दंडु भी चुच्ची आई कुत्तील दंडु खावरा मर्ची इट्स से लॉन्डी वास नॉट लुक इन डी होस्ट ऑफ़ इट्स इक्का यमन रावड़ा नंते वेखो वाचन यहोवा अग्नि मायनस्तममुन्नत आई कुत्तील दंडु भी चुच्ची योर जिस अल योर जिस अल तो वो हु इस लुकिंग आत अरे योर व्यापक जिसना रहना आई कुत्तील आई कुत्तील तट चेदा वाली तट चेदा वाली सो थॉट्स व्हाय इस लुकिंग दिस साइड डेट साइड तार्द में इन्नर जाना इगर जिसना अड़वाल पुरुष लॉर्ड इस मॉर्निंग डेट एवरी मूव माइन्यूट अरे देवड़ू एन्तक शुन्नंगा प्रति अडुगु भी आने कमनेस सो यस डेट इस इजिप्शियन विल कम एंड डिस्ट्रॉयज नॉट रियल अरे दिल्ली सो आई कुत्तील वाची इशारा प्रेजेंट नास्कन जिसस सो थॉट्स व्हाय इस टेकिंग केयर ऑफ़ डेट अलसो अंदर के वाले निवित्त लाने के इंचर पड़े बट व्हाट अबाउट दिस नॉट रियल आई तो इशारा प्रेजेंट संगत दे आर सी डी क्लाउड वालो मेगा ने जिसना रो बट वोम दे आर नॉट सी अंदर वाले योर वन ने छुड़ले पोतना दे नॉट दे विल सी डी लॉर्ड अरे देवड़ी भी पोतन दे नॉट अन्डरस्टैंड यू अरे अदर जिसको दे नॉट अन्डरस्टैंड इस प्लान अरे अनालिक में जिसको थॉट्स व्हाय एंजायटी एंड वॉरी एंड फ़ीयर अंदर के ने भयं वो आतुता भयाय का वनी रोस्न इन आवर लाइफ्स जर्नी अरे जीवित प्रयान वी की वांट री अरे मुरादन जिस लॉर्ड यू बी विद मी इन दिस, यू बी विद मी इन दिस, यू बी विद मी इन दिस अरे प्रवाह दिन चला तो उन्नत आखिर ना तो मैं प्रार्थना जिस वी बी हियर, वी बी देयर अरे इक्का ना नाडिंच आखिर ना नाडिंच प्रवाह वांट री प्रार्थना जिस लॉर्ड इस बीली तू लीड देवड़ा नाडिंच नाम की सितंगा उन्नर बट वी डोंट सी हिम, वी डोंट फील हिम डेट यस देयर विद अस अरे देवड़ा माना छोड़ा मो अरे आयन माना आयन आराधिचु आयन माना तो उन्नर विश्वानी कमनी थॉट्स व्हाय वॉरी कीव्स वारीनेस अंदर के ने ये कचिंतलो दान बर्तन चिंतिस फ़ीयर इन आवर हार्ट्स अरे रूद्ध लो भयं वाट डी हैपन ए जागुस ये बी हैव लीव्ड विल दिस बिना ये जागुस ना नहीं आता सो मच एंजायटी अरे एन्तक आतुत नॉट रियल अरे देश का प्रेजेंट आई एम गोइंग तू टेक इट फ्रॉम इस लैंड अरे देवड़ा नाडो वाकदान देश का निकल दिस बट यू नो गेट दे सी डी एनिमी दे आर फ्रेड अरे अप्रेत शत्रु निज नारा रावड़ा एंड दे आर फिल्ल डी फ़ीयर अरे भयं बस निदुकुन डी लॉर्ड हियर इस लुकिंग फ्रॉम डी फिलर ऑफ़ क्लाउड वो जिसना रियल एंड डी एनिमी विस फॉलोइंग डेट अरे देवड़ा मेगमुन्नत बेगस्तममुन्नत इशारा कमनेस वाले बेम्बरीचे शत्रु नंबर कमनेस एंड यस टेकिंग ऑल डी अफर्ट डिफिकल्ट अरे आयन आयका शत्रु नो डिंचन के समस्त प्रयास देवड़े बढ़न सो इट्स नॉर्मली सेड लाइक दिस अरे साधारण गाय इवित्त चुप डी लीडर टेक डी मैक्सिमम रेस्पांसिबिलिटी अरे नायकुड़ अत्यधिक मायना बाद्यत दीस ना कंपनी अरे कंपनी नो कंपनी इन चार्ज ऑफ़ डी सीईओ और एवरी डी मैनेजर यस डी फुल रेस्पांसिबिलिटी अकांपली नेजर सीईओ सुपरवाइजर इन चार्ज वालो अंतो बाद्यत दीस दे टेक केयर ऑफ़ डी मैनेजमेंट अरे वालो एक पनीर जैसे वालो इन वन पटिंस सो हु टेक्स केयर ऑफ़ आवर लाइफ अरे मनची दिता ने वर्णित
And, he is here. He is here. He is here. And, he has seen this. If we take, believe that Jesus, the Lord is our leader, he is going before me, so, we need to have total confidence.
And, he has seen this.
So, that is called faith.
And, he has seen this.
Ah, that is called faith.
And, he has seen this.
Total dependence on the Lord.
And, he has seen this.
In Chinese, they were trying to get the actual word for faith.
And, he has seen this.
So, they did not find it.
And, he has seen this.
Finally, they could find, they could understand it.
And, he has seen this.
One time, sitting on a stool.
And, he has seen this.
He said.
And, he has seen this.
I am sitting here, I will not fall.
And, he has seen this.
Because someone is supporting me.
And, he has seen this.
That word became faith in Chinese language.
And, he has seen this.
Faith is the substance of things, hope for, evidence of things, not seen.
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
So, when you have faith, you can do wonders.
And, he has seen this.
That's why what God here says.
And, he has seen this.
It's possible, yeah, no? They will kill. It is impossible.
And, he has seen this.
It's better to don't call ourselves to skin.
And, he has seen this.
Entire Christian light hangs on this one word called faith.
And, he has seen this.
That's why God is interested.
And, he has seen this.
Not willing to leave.
And, he has seen this.
God is willing to take all the burden and do all the things for us.
And, he has seen this.
When we put our total faith in him, then we enjoy the blessing of him.
And, he has seen this.
God did so many things with him, he said.
And, he has seen this.
You know what marvelous thing he has done?
And, he has seen this.
As he was in the pillar of cloud.
And, he has seen this.
He had two sides.
And, he has seen this.
Ah, where they were at the Red Sea.
And, he has seen this.
He has two sides.
And, he has seen this.
Sin of Israel.
And, he has seen this.
There was light.
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
He is here. You just, was totally not there.
And, he has seen this.
Till when it was.
And, he has seen this.
The sin of Israel draws the red.
And, he has seen this.
Then, the pillar of cloud, oh.
And, he has seen this.
And, the Egyptians were also following them.
And, he has seen this.
Then, who fought the battle there?
And, he has seen this.
What did the Lord do there?
And, he has seen this.
See, Exodus chapter fourteen.
And, we've seen each other before.
Verse twenty-five.
And, we've seen each other before.
Exodus, verse twenty-five.
And, we've seen this. And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
See, the Lord was there.
And, he has seen this.
What did he do?
And, he has seen this.
He took off the wings.
And, he has seen this.
That means, he was taking the initiative to destroy the Egyptians.
And, he has seen this.
It cannot be done by us.
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
He is here.
And, he has seen this.
Here, the God was going before them, he took the responsibility to defeat the enemy.
And, he has seen this.
He is our leader.
And, he has seen this.
Divine leader.
And, he has seen this.
It's he who goes before us.
And, he has seen this.
I'm going for an interview.
Interview, yes.
He is going before us.
And, he has seen this.
Going for an exam.
And, he has seen this.
He is going before us.
And, he has seen this.
Yeah. So, all the religions are there.
And, he has seen this.
Where are we are going?
And, he has seen this.
He is going before us.
And, he has seen this.
Divine leader.
And, he has seen this.
One person I know, he just prays so wonderfully.
And, he has seen this.
And, he wants to buy some vegetables.
And, he has seen this.
He just prays like this.
And, he has seen this.
But, please go, go before me.
And, he has seen this.
Take me to the right shop.
And, he has seen this.
Where I can get the right price.
And, he has seen this.
Where I can get the right material.
And, he has seen this.
That will be good.
And, he has seen this.
Simple example.
And, he has seen this.
How many times have you exercised that?
And, he has seen this.
Oh, God, you give me this exception.
And, he has seen this.
Hmm, that's what we, we pray for.
And, he has seen this.
But, God is willing to take a mighty step on our behalf.
And, he has seen this.
He has done marvelous things in our lives.
And, he has seen this.
Days goes by sometimes we forget.
And, he has seen this.
But, it's the same yesterday, today and forever.
And, he has seen this.
So, now, second example, let's see.
And, he has seen this.
We know the story of Jacob.
And, he has seen this.
In Deuteronomy, chapter thirty-two.
And, we've seen this.
Moses describes about how God found Jacob and lived him.
And, he has seen this.
Chapter thirty-three verse nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
And, we've seen this. And, he has 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 seen this.
Why did he lead it?
And, he has seen this.
There is a great blessing, Captain's dog, Jacob.
And, he has seen this.
What is that blessing?
And, he has seen this.
Okay, all together.
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
He learned to enjoy all this best blessing.
And, he has seen this.
But, who is Jacob?
And, he has seen this.
What is the name of Jacob means?
And, he has seen this.
We all know him, he's a deceiver.
And, he has seen this.
But, how can God think about a deceiver to bless him like this?
And, he has seen this.
How can he choose him and lead him?
And, he has seen this.
So, that is the condition of all we as believers.
And, he has seen this.
Before we were born again.
And, he has seen this.
We were, hmm, our heart was deceitful, desperately he is.
And, he has seen this.
We were unfaithful for God's kingdom and God's plan.
And, he has seen this.
And, that's why worship, there is only words that come.
And, he has seen this.
What I was once and what I have now.
And, he has seen this.
And, he is here.
And, he is here.
And, he is here.
And, he is here.
What about the children?
And, he has seen this.
Once I was like this.
And, he has seen this.
You know about the story of the flying man?
And, he has seen this. You have seen this.
What does he speak? What does he say? Nine twenty-five.
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
He is here.
He is here.
Once I was blind.
And, he has seen this.
And, he is here. That's our, that's our estimate.
And, he has seen this.
Ah, once I was blind.
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
Once I was horrible bits.
And, he has seen this.
Once I was in the mighty clay.
And, he has seen this.
I was once in the sight of the devil.
And, he has seen this.
I was scared in my sins.
And, he has seen this.
Chichenwani.
And, he has seen this.
That is our condition.
And, he has seen this.
Yeah, why has God loved such a person?
And, he has seen this.
That's why he wrote about the life of Jacob for our sake.
And, he has seen this.
What does he say?
And, he has seen this.
Yeah, what do? And, he? Janami.
And, he has seen this.
God's portion is his people.
And, he has seen this.
Yeah, go.
And, he has seen this.
Jacob is my property, my inheritance, my treasure.
And, he has seen this.
Yeah, that is God's desire.
And, he has seen this.
Of course, in the words that we have, the fact is that, this is my rest, ah. Or, I have decided.
And, he has seen this.
I have decided.
And, he has seen this.
What does that mean?
And, he has seen this.
The Lord is not so really concerned about physical stature.
And, he has seen this.
Oh, I designed beautiful legs.
And, he has seen this.
My music system.
And, he has seen this.
I'm working there.
And, he has seen this.
Nice painting.
And, he has seen this.
Nice beautiful area.
And, he has seen this.
And, he is here.
And, he has seen this.
What does he desire?
And, he has seen this.
What is his desire?
And, he has seen this.
Man may trouble me. He will not have any problem with this. Man may trouble me.
Man will.
That's what is desire.
And, he has seen this.
He will do or three gathered in my name.
And, he has seen this.
I am there.
And, he has seen this.
I am concerned about my people.
And, he has seen this.
The Lord's portion is his people.
And, he has seen this.
And, Jacob.
And, he has seen this.
There is the Lord of Israel.
And, he has seen this.
My property.
And, he has seen this.
But, who is Jacob?
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this. Hundred thousand years ago.
Thousand thousand years ago. He had to literally, none of it wrong.
And, he has seen this.
His parents say, you go, you go, get out, not be here.
And, he has seen this.
But, what about the theory says?
And, he has seen this.
Jacob obey his father and his father.
And, he has seen this.
There is a part, I don't want to, we did this, we did this.
And, he has seen this.
He goes to the moment.
He goes to the moment.
He is there, he is going, he is going, he is out, he is here.
And, he is here.
He is here.
He is here.
No, they can't.
And, he has seen this.
Where do I go?
And, he has seen this.
What shall I do?
And, he has seen this.
I love my house.
I am doing.
I love my family.
And, he has seen this.
I don't want to, my sister.
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
I don't want to go.
And, he has seen this.
What do you say?
And, he has seen this.
I don't want to go.
And, he has seen this.
Jacob's time.
And, he has seen this.
Jacob obeyed his father and now that he will leave the house.
And, he has seen this.
Why?
And, he has seen this. And, he has seen this.
God has a special plan.
And, he has seen this.
In you, by staying there, he will not prosper.
And, he has seen this.
Only when he goes out again, where he is lying.
And, he has seen this.
So, he managed.
And, he has seen this.
Very much feared he managed.
And, he has seen this.
So, while he was going in the wilderness.
And, he has seen this.
He had not up here.
And, he has seen this.
But, yet he was determined to go.
And, he has seen this.
God saw his God.
And, he has seen this.
What, hmm, 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 we find Jacob is, he is very evil in the faith of his fathers.
And, he has seen this.
What did the fathers believe?
And, he has seen this.
Believe in the God Abraham.
And, he has seen this. अरे अपराह्मो देव ने नमर
Who did God, I said, believe?
अरे इस्ताक गवन नमर
Who did believe in the God Abraham?
अरे अपराह्मो देव ने नमर
Who did Abraham believe?
अपराह्मो देव ने नमर
Abraham देव नमर
अरे देव नमर
ये देवनी
ये देवनी
God never revealed as Jacob, Abraham finds that Jacob
अरे देव ओतरनतान यहुवा का अपराह्मो कानी इस्ताक कानी आकूब कानी बैल पच्चुरे
But he revealed in Samaria
अरे वेरो विदान लो बैल पच्चुनाड
And of course, self-given, shava shakti, he revealed himself as an almighty God
अरे सर्व शक्ति रहन देव बैल पच्चुनाड
Abraham's faith was so simple but very strong
अरे अपराह्मो यहुवा का विश्वास चाल सुलुवायन दी चाल चिन्ह का रस्ताल भलमें
His faith rested on trees
आयन यहुवा का विश्वास मुरु विश्वास में आदार पड़ुन्दी
He believed in the existence of God
अरे देव उन्नाड अलान्टी विश्वास ने नमर
God calling, he believed, yes, there is a God, I must obey
अरे देव तुलचन पुरु आयन अल्पुनाड रावण देव उन्नाड आयन विदेय द जुपिंग छाड़
And he believed in the word of God
रेडवर दी देव के वाक्यों में नमर
Yes, God is speaking, it is God's word
अरे वो देव वाक्य अर्थ नाड़ो देव ने वाक्य
That he believed in the promises of God
देव यहुवा वाक्य नमर
What God has said, he will show little bit
देव ये चिप्ताड़ तप्पा पुन्ना जस्ताड
That's the faith of Abraham
अरे अपराह्मो वंदी विश्वासम बोले
He didn't know where to go, but yet he believed, he is going to reach the destiny
एकदा वेल्ला अलान्टी तेली दु आयन पटिकी गम्याली चेनुदा विश्वासम गल्ली किन्नाड
His faith was beyond this life
अरे इज जीविताने का न्यूकुड़ आयन विश्वासम येतो अधिकम का उन्दी
Beyond this life
अरे जीवितम कंडे ये को दा
देव को इस येतु चुस्त वेल्याड
लिले दें जिसे रोचस्त वेल्याड
पुनार्गल गला पक्ष आयन शिल्प यू धीर्मा अगड़ो या इस वेल्या ने द टैक्स द सिडी एवं
अरे आपके नमो आशीर्वाद निर्माण अगड़ा आपके नानी के ने वेलाय
That's why he was dwelling in death
अंदर एक उड़ार पुलारो देव सिंचाड
His faith was beyond this life
अरे आयन यहुवा का विश्वासम इज जीवितम दार्ती आयन विश्वास बंदी
That's how one's faith should be
आप विदंगा आर विश्वास बंदा
Jacob had that faith in his life
याकूब तन जीवितम में अतुमंत विश्वासम गल्ली किन्नाड
He believed in the God of Abraham and Isaac
अरे याकूब अपराह्मो देव इस्ताक देव ने नमर
Then one day when he was as was traveling
अरे कदि लाना आयन रायम चेस्तु उठुन्दी
He was in the wilderness
अलान्टी बोलो उन्नाड
See, so many voices
अरे एक स्वरालो इन्दा उन्नाड
Heavy voice of lion
पाउछा सिंहम यहुवा स्वर में
Tiger
प्रिंस पुली
Gods open this angels and animals
देव तेतो बायंकर में जंतु वेल कस्ता गेट
His faith was in the God of Abraham and Isaac
आयन पटिकी कुड़ा यहुवा का विश्वासम अपराह्मो देव इस्ताक देव ने जुचाड
In that fear, midravast
आयन बायम लो अनिद्रस्त
No, can't charm him
अरे चुट्टी बुड़ा कंसल एड
Okay, she took this one and slept
आयन पटिकी राय दिस कोई पड़ुन्दाड
Went off to the sky
अरे आयन आकाश में एक रिपेयर
So then he had a dream
अब आप कालूसी
You all know that story
अक्कत ना कालूसी
And the Lord said
अब तुम नाड
I am with the Lord, thank God
अरे नील देव ने यहुवा ने ने
There, first time he could see someone is watching his steps
अरे मट्टा मत इस सारा एंग गम्य छाड़ ने येवर आयन अडुक छाड़ गम्य इस्तुनाड
Have you ever experienced that?
येवर इप्परे ना अलान्टी में अल्प इच्छा
Your faith, if you believe that God is present with you, you can definitely experience that he is monitoring our own steps
अरे यस कृष्ण प्रभारी ने विश्वासम उच्ते तप्पा पुन्ना गम्य इच्छा गए देंदे अरुक छाड़ ने गम्य इस्तुनाड
Jacob knew someone is watching
अरे याकूब ये भी एरिक डे ने येवर गम्य इस्तुनाड
He heard the voice
स्माराज इन्नाड
And then he saw the tree, the ladder, he just going up and down
अरे देव तुलचन पाई की दिल दिल कुन्ना आयन खालन जुचाड
And that time, he just says, this is a very precious place
अप्पर आसमय में अलान्टी छाड़ इधर तो प्रश्नस्तमय स्तर
Then he says
अधिकांड
Champed Twenty eight
सिरो एनी दवा दिया
Street verse twelve
अन्न दवा छन अप्पर तन खालन का ने अंदर निचन ऊमि बीतन इर्को पड़ी इन्दर ताल इकड़ा आकाश में ने दे ताल देव ने दुद्दल एकुचु दिगुचु नुदी
That's the time we had the revelation of God
आसमय में देव यहुवा प्रत्यक्षता गली किन्नाड
First revelation
अरे व्यक्ति का तन प्रत्यक्षता
See the Lord sits on the top
अरे आयन देव यहुवा पाइन आकाश में पूछ छाड़
And he could have the revelation of God's promises
अरे देव यहुवा वाक्य प्रत्यक्षता ने बंदा गली
Had the revelation of the house of God
अरे देव ने बंदेरम यहुवा प्रत्यक्षता उड़ा बंदा
It's so wonderful to see, oh God, he is due to the place where he dwells
अरे देव एकदा निवासित सुनाड आप प्रारंभ के माने नडिक्चर अम्मा ने इधर तो अप्पुतम एन विषय
What does "be" tell me?
रिपेट ने अर्थ इन्दी
It's the house of God
अरे देव ने इल्ल
We all have houses
परंदु के इल्ल नाई
We all have names on our house
अरे इंटरपीड आम रात वाल पेड़ को उड़न
So-and-so, so-and-so place, person stays here
अरे व्यक्ति पेड़ अकड़ उठुन्दी
But God's house
अरे देव ने बंदेरम
Who stays there?
अकड़ येवर निश्चित
God stays there
अरे देव ने निश्चित
God's house
अरे देव ने बंदेरम
That's why it's so wonderful to be led wonderfully to that place which is called the house of God
अंदर देव ने बंदेरम प्रारंभ का नडिक्चर अम्मा ने इधर तो अप्पुतम एन विषय
Jacob was led like that
अरे याकूब आगी देव का नडिक्चर पड़ा
And such a wonderful promise there
अरे अकड़ अप्पुतम एन वाक्य
In God's house, all the blessings keep flowing
एंदु का देव ने बंदेरम लो आशीर्वाद अलान्टी पोंकी परुतुन्दाई
That's why it's so wonderful to be always be available in God's house
अंदर देव ने बंदेरम लो एकड़ अंदु पाट लो उड़न अम्मा ने इधर तो अप्पुतम एन विषय
Psalm hundred thirty-three
तो तमुपाई मुड़ा वक्की इतना
Hundred thirty-three
तो तमुपाई मुड़ा वक्की इतना
And verse three
मुड़ा वक्की छन सीओ ने बंदेरम नील की दिखवा चिकर मोन मच्चु आयन उन्दी आशीर्वाद अलान्टी शास्त्र जीवन अलान्टी अच्छे रुन्ना वाला नी येवर वास सर्विच नाड
सर्विच नाड
अरे देव वेतु सर्विच नाड
But in English, you know what expansion?
अरे इंग्लिश यहाँ द
Yeah Where the Lord commanded
अरे अच्छा देव आर नहीं छाड
From here, all the blessings go
इकड़ा निंची अन्नी आशीर्वाद का वेलाय
Here, everyone is going to be blessed
इकड़ा निंची प्रत्यक्षता दीर्घ
He sings a song also
अरे पार मार्य
He mantra, he was saying
He mantra, he was saying
It's all blessing
अरे अंदर आशीर्वाद
Next place is
अवध लाइन लो दी
Here we go For the Jem In the, Psalm eighty-four verse four
अरे नेरबाई नेरबाई नान को वक्की इतना नान को वक्की
For the Jem, Nidus Tutiins, they are still praising you
अरे विद्यम ने निष्ठिस्त
What does that mean?
नादम इन्दी
You receive a blessing
आश्रवाद अलान्टी
Come and praise the Lord
रोच देव नाव अस्तुदी
And take some more blessing
इकड़ा आश्रवाद निष्ठिस्त
Then again, come and praise the Lord
अर्मा वाच देव निष्ठिस्त
Take some more blessing
इकड़ा तन आश्रवाद निष्ठिस्त
And God praised the Lord
ताल अब भांगा वाच देव निष्ठिस्त
And Chilios blessing, Chilios praise now
ताल विद्यम देव ने आश्रवाद अलान्टी देव निष्ठिस्त
Jacob had divine revelation of God's house
अरे याकूब देव ने बंदेर पक्षम दाईविकम अलान्टी प्रत्यक्षता बंदा
What does he say?
अरे वन्दु
This is the house of God
इधर देव ने यहुवा बंदेरम
Philippi
अरे दिल्लो बाउंड
Twenty-eight
अरे वे के ने दी
And verse
वर्ल्ड
Verse seventy
अरे वक्की छन बाय पड़ी इस स्तर में येतो बायंकर
बायंकर
इधर देव ने बंदेरमे गानी वेरो का
He had that word, बंदेरमे गानी वेरो का This God's house, that house of all
इधर देव ने बंदेरम के यहुवा देव ने बंदेरम मात्र
That's wonderful privilege
अंत को आधिक
But the pity is
अरे विचार का विषय में जांदी
That matter of how you people are
यहुवा बंदेरम लो येतो अंदर
Okay now Interpretation, very good
इधर नाड
तेरी बंदेरम का एकदा उन्दी Where is it? In the South America, I think they are
अरे एकदा अंसार नगर इप्परे एकदा उन्दी
एकदा Okay, you do You have done it before, when Jacob was saying that
अरे याकूब अमार्जित उठुन्दी
Where is that?
अब बंदेरम एकदा उन्दी
This is house of God
इधर देव ने बंदेरम
Ah, where is it?
एकदा उन्दी
Where is Jacob?
आसमय में याकूब एकदा उन्नाड
एकदा Correct, huh? New Sanpranth, अरे एक प्रांत
अलान्टी प्रांत
Correct, Chitthuam, okay, yes, you do आरण्य प्रांत
अरे अलान्य प्रांत
No, what is there?
अकड़ येवर लेर
Only the surrounding, only animals are there
चुट्टा कुचिरपटा अंत जंतु
Wilderness
अदार तन अलान्टी
But yet
आयन पटिकी
God chose them
अरे देव आयन प्रारंभ एरपार्ट जस्ता
My best
इधि नायक विश्रांत इस स्तर
My place
इधि नायन नीम निवास
And Jacob says, this is the gateway to heaven
याकूब छाड़ इधर परलोक गविनी
Such a wonderful privilege
अंत तो आधिक
So when we come together with wonders of heart
अरे एक रुद्ध यहुवा तो मनम कलिसी वक्की उठुन्दी
Full faith that this is God's house
अरे निशन का संपूर्ण विश्वासम देव ने बंदेरम अल्पुन्दी
And as God's people pray together
देव ने प्रार्थित नपड़ कलिसी
They share together
अरे कलिसी पंचकुन्दी
Friendship together
कलिसी सहवासम जस्ता
Very wonderful this burden
अरे लोकाय भारम लोक मोस्तुन
And the church has a passion for precious souls
अरे रशिंचिपोय आत्म अलान्टी संगाय की भारम ने नपड़
You can surely see people entering from this place, from this gate to heaven
अरे तप्पा पुन्ना प्रजल ये यहुवा द्वार में इच्छि परलोक गविनी छाड़ अम्मा ने दिस अवध
Shant
असाध्य
Souls are being saved
अरे आत्म रक्षित पट्टुनाई
Meaning they are saved Meeting, truly meeting time
अरे अकुर कल स्तर में रक्षित पट्टुनाड
But other than that
अरे दानी कंडे वेल
See God bless you. This is Ashiravaham Shridhi. Santanam Bhoomidhakakku Iskarienuvaayenakuru. Neevu Paramanitathalu, Dhruputhathalu, Kuttarakuthathalu, Dakshinamuthathalu vyapichadavu. Bhoomiyavka Vamsham Laniyuvu, Neevu Nukkano, Neevu Santanam Nukkano, Ashiravadi Pudipadnu.
See God says I will bless your family, your generation, that is different matter.
Neevu Nukkano, Neevu Santanam Nukkano, Ashiravadi Pudipadnu.
But here what do God say?
Neevu Nukkano.
In Santanam Vachey, Bhoomidhak.
Bhoomiyavka Vamsham Laniyuvu.
Wow. Through this deceive Jacob, God wants to bless the whole world.
Neevu Nukkano, Neevu Santanam Nukkano, Ashiravadi Pudipadnu.
You and I are part of that blessing.
Neevu Nukkano, Neevu Santanam Nukkano, Ashiravadi Pudipadnu.
That's how God led Jacob.
Neevu Nukkano, Neevu Santanam Nukkano, Ashiravadi Pudipadnu.
And then next aspect is.
Neevu Nukkano.
In God's people, God leaves, God's people as a flock.
Neevu Nukkano, Neevu Santanam Nukkano, Ashiravadi Pudipadnu.
Chapter seventy-seven of Psalms.
Neevu Nukkano.
And verse twenty.
Neevu Nukkano.
Chapter seventy-seven, verse twenty.
Neevu Nukkano.
Four together.
Neevu Nukkano. Moshe Aravamaksheta, Neevu Santanam Nukkano, Ashiravadi Pudipadnu.
So God's people are as a flock in God's sight.
Neevu Nukkano.
When we were in sin.
Neevu Nukkano.
What kind of people were we?
Neevu Nukkano.
Goriyavalevamoth. Throw up, we were all lost our way like a sheep.
Neevu Nukkano.
The two largest Christ whose sacrifice, whose death, by the name of Christian, we have brought back as a flock of God. That's why Jesus repeats these words again and again.
Neevu Nukkano.
My sheep hear my voice.
Neevu Nukkano.
My sheep follow me.
Neevu Nukkano.
My sheep know me.
Neevu Nukkano.
What a privilege.
Neevu Nukkano.
Flock of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
God's flock is a very special flock.
Neevu Nukkano.
We are not God's evil.
Neevu Nukkano.
God has an eternal purpose for this flock.
Neevu Nukkano.
God's children are as a flock of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
And he gave them a promise.
Neevu Nukkano.
You will get the cannon and enjoy the full blessing.
Neevu Nukkano.
But how about us?
Neevu Nukkano.
We follow the flock of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
What is our blessing?
Neevu Nukkano.
What is God's mind for us?
Neevu Nukkano.
Because we are following.
Neevu Nukkano.
We hear his voice.
Neevu Nukkano.
We have to know him.
Neevu Nukkano.
We have to be obedient to him.
Neevu Nukkano.
But more than that.
Neevu Nukkano.
Two flower shepherd.
Neevu Nukkano.
Then what is God's plan?
Neevu Nukkano.
Luke Gospel.
Lukasvanta.
Chapter twelve.
Panaravadyaayim.
Verse thirty-two.
Neevu Nukkano.
Four together.
Neevu Nukkano.
Chapter twelve.
Lukasvanta, Panaravadyaayim.
Verse thirty-two.
Neevu Nukkano.
Four together.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
What a privilege.
Neevu Nukkano.
God sees beyond our future.
Neevu Nukkano.
That's why he says, still our evil flock.
Neevu Nukkano.
Before the tests and trials in this world.
Neevu Nukkano.
Yet I have prepared a kingdom, that is, you are going to be there for that kingdom.
Neevu Nukkano.
That's why God's flock is always a smaller flock.
Neevu Nukkano.
Yeah, because it's a very tough job to follow Christ.
Neevu Nukkano.
Tough job to be obedient and hear his voice.
Neevu Nukkano.
And that's why we have to be very careful against false teachers, false brethren who scoundre the flock.
Neevu Nukkano.
When we allow ourselves to be bought from leaders, he will lead us like a flock.
Neevu Nukkano.
I think we've stopped there on that first aspect, we'll go for the other aspects.
Neevu Nukkano.
We're seeing divine key.
Neevu Nukkano.
Maybe another fight can do this. So next aspect is divine presence.
Neevu Nukkano.
Very few things we will see there.
Neevu Nukkano.
God's presence.
Neevu Nukkano.
I will go before thee and I will be with thee.
Neevu Nukkano.
God is with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
He was with Jacob.
Neevu Nukkano.
He was with Abraham.
Neevu Nukkano.
He was with Moses.
Neevu Nukkano.
He was with down through the ages, we find here, everywhere, even Joshua, as I was in Moses, I will be with you.
Neevu Nukkano.
He wants to be with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
And he longs to be with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
He will come down in the course of the day to spend time with Adam and Eve.
Neevu Nukkano.
He wants to have our share.
Neevu Nukkano.
And that's why he says, I will never leave you, not for safety.
Neevu Nukkano.
I want to be with you.
Neevu Nukkano.
Many times we lose that consciousness of the presence of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
But as we begin the day, we begin the day with the presence of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
We end the day, end the day with the presence of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
When he is with us, God be for us, no one or nothing can make him stop.
Neevu Nukkano.
After Moses was leading God's people.
Neevu Nukkano.
He told the Lord.
Neevu Nukkano.
Not I want to see your glory.
Neevu Nukkano.
But I want to enter into your presence.
Neevu Nukkano.
God is there with them.
Neevu Nukkano.
He's been constantly communing with God.
Neevu Nukkano.
But something is not in God, I want to see your glory.
Neevu Nukkano.
In other words.
Neevu Nukkano.
God, can you show me your face?
Neevu Nukkano.
What did God say?
Neevu Nukkano.
When I see them, see my face.
Neevu Nukkano.
No one can live by seeing my face.
Neevu Nukkano.
What do you mean?
Neevu Nukkano.
My presence shall go with you.
Neevu Nukkano.
That wonderful promise.
Neevu Nukkano.
Has led him to his next step of his life.
Neevu Nukkano.
My presence shall go with you.
Neevu Nukkano.
But Moses was more anxious and more inclusive about this aspect.
Neevu Nukkano.
What did Moses say?
Neevu Nukkano.
God, if you're not present, it's not with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
Don't take us from here.
Neevu Nukkano.
Some boldness he had to tell the Lord.
Neevu Nukkano.
You said your friends are going to be with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
He was not with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
Don't let us make any plans, any future, any step forward.
Neevu Nukkano.
There was one man who was planning to go abroad.
Neevu Nukkano.
Oh God, it's quite exciting.
Neevu Nukkano.
To go abroad, it is very happy and joyful.
Neevu Nukkano.
The young man prayed.
Neevu Nukkano.
God, I want to go.
Neevu Nukkano.
If you are going, I will go.
Neevu Nukkano.
If you are going, I will go.
Neevu Nukkano.
That's the challenge.
Neevu Nukkano.
In our daily life.
Neevu Nukkano.
The Lord means this promise.
Neevu Nukkano.
I am with you.
Neevu Nukkano.
My presence shall go with you.
Neevu Nukkano.
But how many times we are going, God, if you're not going, I'm not doing this.
Neevu Nukkano.
We know the story of Daniel.
Neevu Nukkano.
And what was with him?
Neevu Nukkano.
So good of God is with him.
Neevu Nukkano.
He was sure the Lord is in all his situation.
Neevu Nukkano.
And the writing was signed, we put in the last letter.
Neevu Nukkano.
What did he do?
Neevu Nukkano.
Just went into God's presence.
Neevu Nukkano.
As usual.
Neevu Nukkano.
Without any serious anxiety or worry.
Neevu Nukkano.
Quietly went into the last letter.
Neevu Nukkano.
What does, what does this mean?
Neevu Nukkano.
The Lord is with us, he must take care of me.
Neevu Nukkano.
If he is with me, he has to prove himself that he is with me.
Neevu Nukkano.
What was the king's estimate?
Neevu Nukkano.
The Lord thy God, whom you serve continually, he will deliver me.
Neevu Nukkano.
If the Lord is with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
Even those who are outside will recognize that the God whom we are serving is true.
Neevu Nukkano.
Another question, the mission of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
He will, if the Lord delivers us, let him deliver us.
Neevu Nukkano.
If he doesn't deliver us.
Neevu Nukkano.
But he will not go against our God's presence.
Neevu Nukkano.
So they were put into the fire.
Neevu Nukkano.
Who was there?
Neevu Nukkano.
The Lord was there.
Neevu Nukkano.
That's where the verses comes to us.
Neevu Nukkano.
I see a forty-three.
Neevu Nukkano.
Verse two.
Neevu Nukkano.
Four together.
Neevu Nukkano.
I see a.
Neevu Nukkano.
Forty-three.
Neevu Nukkano.
Verse two.
Neevu Nukkano.
What a privilege this is.
Neevu Nukkano.
God is with us in all situations.
Neevu Nukkano.
He is with us in storms.
Neevu Nukkano.
He is with us when the floods come.
Neevu Nukkano.
He is in every test and trial.
Neevu Nukkano.
We know opposite Paul.
Neevu Nukkano.
He went to one city.
Neevu Nukkano.
The Lord gave us shirts.
Neevu Nukkano.
I am with you, not Paul, I am with you.
Neevu Nukkano.
I have much people in this city.
Neevu Nukkano.
Next, a pretty team.
Neevu Nukkano.
And verse ten.
Neevu Nukkano.
Nine and ten.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
Hmm.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
So much opposition is there.
Neevu Nukkano.
So much fear is there.
Neevu Nukkano.
Forget God gave us shirts.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
Concerned of God.
Neevu Nukkano.
Fall of shame.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
He better go to the chief.
Neevu Nukkano.
In Madhya Pradesh.
Neevu Nukkano.
Very important area.
Neevu Nukkano.
So much opposition there.
Neevu Nukkano.
But the Lord gave us shirts.
Neevu Nukkano.
As the events.
Neevu Nukkano.
Many people came and you stopped them.
Neevu Nukkano.
One leader came.
Neevu Nukkano.
Why have you come here?
Neevu Nukkano.
Who gave you permission?
Neevu Nukkano.
He said, follow him.
Neevu Nukkano.
And we asked him to read in Hindi Bible these words.
Neevu Nukkano.
Poli, Bondi Jaayat Padu.
Neevu Nukkano.
So, then he read.
Neevu Nukkano.
What I am with you, no man should affect you on anything, but I have much people in this city.
Neevu Nukkano.
Ah, thank God, afraid.
Neevu Nukkano.
It's all the entire crowd.
Neevu Nukkano.
So, 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 so.
Neevu Nukkano.
A place in Jaraanu logheemika.
Neevu Nukkano.
Many people came.
Neevu Nukkano.
Do not disturb them.
Neevu Nukkano.
Free asking word.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
Every situation.
Neevu Nukkano.
Lastly.
Neevu Nukkano.
Divine protection.
Neevu Nukkano.
God, does fear not, what I am saying.
Neevu Nukkano.
Fear not.
Neevu Nukkano.
You travel thirty-one and you escape.
Neevu Nukkano.
Last question says, fear not neither be dismayed.
Neevu Nukkano.
So there is so many kinds of fear with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
Personal fears.
Neevu Nukkano.
Health fears.
Neevu Nukkano.
The moment someone goes for a test, for a blood test.
Neevu Nukkano.
And the first time they, the doctor says, you have sugar, you are a diabetic.
Neevu Nukkano.
Half of our life is already gone there.
Neevu Nukkano.
What, me?
Neevu Nukkano.
I am such a greedy person.
Neevu Nukkano.
No, I don't fear of the bottom line, but you're going to continue in this.
Neevu Nukkano.
Where did this sugar come from?
Neevu Nukkano.
Clear comes from that the onwards.
Neevu Nukkano.
So many fears.
Neevu Nukkano.
But God says fear not.
Neevu Nukkano.
How much concern is he about us?
Neevu Nukkano.
At least one. Chapter ten.
Neevu Nukkano.
At least one.
At least one.
Chapter ten.
Neevu Nukkano.
Thirty and thirty-one.
Neevu Nukkano.
Four together.
Neevu Nukkano.
At least one, ten, thirty, thirty-one.
Neevu Nukkano.
So, God numbers our head.
Neevu Nukkano.
He numbers our tears.
Neevu Nukkano.
In canny.
In canny.
Manam. Our steps.
Neevu Nukkano.
More.
Neevu Nukkano.
Char Pramkime.
Char Pramkime.
Yeah, right, that's right, our days are numbered.
Neevu Nukkano.
We cannot stay one day extra, we cannot go one day before.
Neevu Nukkano.
He knows our days.
Neevu Nukkano.
Where does this turn?
Neevu Nukkano.
Psalm thirty-seven.
Neevu Nukkano.
And was eighteen.
Neevu Nukkano.
Psalm thirty-seven. Verse eighteen. Chas. Psalm, yeah, right, Psalm thirty-seven, verse eighteen. English, the English is clear, right, there who sang yellow and red.
Neevu Nukkano.
They have what?
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
But the language it says.
Neevu Nukkano.
The Lord knows the days of their price.
Neevu Nukkano.
Privilege.
Neevu Nukkano.
Our, our, our lives are in safe hands.
Neevu Nukkano.
How safe is our, in our, our life?
Neevu Nukkano.
Revelation.
Neevu Nukkano.
Chapter one.
Neevu Nukkano.
Revelation.
Neevu Nukkano.
Chapter one.
Neevu Nukkano.
God reveals this truth through Paul to John.
Neevu Nukkano.
Neevu Nukkano. Seventeen, eighteen.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
And raise.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
What does it mean?
Neevu Nukkano.
He's putting his right hand upon John, what, what is saying?
Neevu Nukkano.
Fifty, a month.
Neevu Nukkano.
You are not.
Neevu Nukkano.
Yeah. Of the Jivada.
Neevu Nukkano.
Four together.
Four together.
What does it mean?
Neevu Nukkano.
John, I know you're breathing, I know you're dead. I am even lives.
Neevu Nukkano.
And I was dead.
Neevu Nukkano.
I am alive forevermore.
Neevu Nukkano.
Don't fear.
Neevu Nukkano.
If I am alive.
Neevu Nukkano.
You also believe in me.
Neevu Nukkano.
John Gospel.
Lukasvanta.
Chapter fifteen.
Neevu Nukkano.
John Gospel.
Lukasvanta.
Chapter fifteen.
Neevu Nukkano.
Okay, chapter fourteen.
Neevu Nukkano.
Verse nineteen.
Neevu Nukkano.
John, chapter fourteen.
Lukasvanta, Panaravadyaayim.
Verse nineteen.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
Neevu Nukkano. God's protection is not only the time that we spend on earth.
Neevu Nukkano.
And what is.
Neevu Nukkano.
It is beyond the grave.
Neevu Nukkano.
It is true eternity.
Neevu Nukkano.
Now, but that's where God says.
Neevu Nukkano.
I'm going, my, my father's house, any matches.
Neevu Nukkano.
Ravata.
Ravata.
Ee Yedda.
Neevu Nukkano.
But I go to prepare a place for you.
Neevu Nukkano.
And if I go, I will come again.
Neevu Nukkano.
You go to.
Neevu Nukkano.
Here in the stadium.
Neevu Nukkano. Neevu Nukkano.
Sit there now. We are afraid of small things in this world.
Neevu Nukkano.
God's protection is true eternity.
Neevu Nukkano.
Hence the plan for his people.
Neevu Nukkano.
He desires to be with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
Divine leading for us.
Neevu Nukkano.
Divine presence with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
Divine protection with us.
Neevu Nukkano.
When promise for your family was coming here.
Neevu Nukkano.
As it is chapter thirty-six.
Neevu Nukkano.
Verse eleven. Verse eleven.
But Moses is a God.
All together.
But Moses is a God.
Ezekiel thirty-six.
But Moses is a God.
And verse eleven.
But Moses is a God.
All together.
But Moses is a God.
All together.
But Moses is a God. But Moses is a God. But Moses is a God.
So God is preparing, preparing the people for a prepared place.
But Moses is a God. But Moses is a God.
He loves his people.
But Moses is a God.
Because they are not for me, they are the clock.
But Moses is a God.
They are my company.
But Moses is a God.
Ah, they are my joy.
But Moses is a God.
They are going to be with me through eternity.
But Moses is a God.
So with these few thoughts, it is prepare ourselves and then God help us to go to office.
But Moses is a God.
Lord, I am here. In the past, I was a priest. In the past. In the past, I was a priest. 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 I was a priest.